Hello everyone and thank you for coming to our live webinar, We Are Women. Unfortunately, we couldn't hold it at the Orange County Regional History Center how it was originally planned. But we do thank you for coming and hope you guys understand that the reason we've moved to an online platform is for the safety of everyone. I will begin by presenting the Commissioner. Commissioner Emily Bonilla was elected in November 2016 to the Orange County Board of County Commissioners. She obtained an Associate's Degree in Film from Valencia, a Bachelor's in English from UCF, and Master's in Internet Marketing from Fort Worth University. She has extensive career experience in film, photography, marketing, and creative writing. She promotes conservation of Orange County Economic and Research. She is a faculty member for 21 years. She is honored to serve her district as she has had the opportunity to improve the lives of residents by focusing on smart growth, economic development, protecting the environment, supporting local organizations, and advocating for the people. Commissioner Bonilla is a strong advocate for women. She develops comprehensive marketing tools and strategies that give work-at-home moms a boost of the business ladder. She provides flexible but firm leadership to bring sound judgment to Orange County. Commissioner Bonilla, please wave. Okay, the remaining ladies on screen right now are going to be the women who will be presented to you today and giving a story about their lives and a positive message of what it means for them to be a woman. So Commissioner Bonilla will take it from here and she will introduce the panelists that we have for this evening.
Hi everyone, I'm so excited about this webinar, it's our first time doing this. And this event, We Are Women, has a superhero theme, which is why a couple of us are wearing our superhero gear. And you'll hear more about that a little bit later. So the first person I wanted to introduce is Carol Burkett. Carol Burkett has worked in state and local government for over 24 years. On December 4th, 2018, Carol was appointed by Mayor Jerry L. Demings as a Deputy Chief of Staff. She works closely with the Chief of Staff and is responsible for oversight of the community liaisons, community engagement, and constituent relations, as well as working with county staff and community partners on Mayor Demings Housing For All Task Force, transportation, and other community and public safety initiatives. Previously, Carol was Director of the Orange County Drug Free Office from 2005 to December 2018. Carol and her staff worked with community leaders in over 50 agencies that serve on eight working committees that provide expertise in areas of prevention, enforcement, healthcare, and treatment. During her tenure, the Drug Free Office received several federal and state drug prevention grants totaling over $4 million. Carol has been responsible for the coordination of the Orange County Methamphetamine Task Force 2005, Orange County Underage Drinking Task Force 2008, and Mayor Demings Prescription Drug Task Force in 2011, and most recently, the Orange County Heroin Task Force. Carol holds a Bachelor's Degree in Political Science from East Tennessee State University, and serves the Central Florida American Lung Association Board and the Orlando Valley Board. And I'll pass it over to Carol.
Thank you Commissioner. I hope everyone can hear me, it's such a pleasure to be on and to be invited to participate in We Are Women. So thank you Commissioner for having me on and to be a part of such an amazing group of talented, strong women. I couldn't be in better company this evening as we're all sheltering in place right now because of the public health crisis we're facing. So I guess we're all going to talk just a little bit about ourselves. So I hope this event will keep me on task where I don't go over my timeframe. But I'm not born and raised in Florida, I'm not a native. I was born in a very rural area, small area in Tennessee, Jonesboro. It happens to be the oldest town in Tennessee, so that's one of our claims to fame. We're also known for international storytelling, believe it or not. That is now a degree that you can get at the local university that I graduated from. And it's home of David Crockett Birthplace. And yes, that is the name of my high school, which a lot of people don't believe until I show them my high school classroom that I still have. So I'm very proud to be a part of that area of the country. East Tennessee is also known, if you know Jolly Parton, that's the area that she grew up in. So beautiful area to be raised in, very small. I think the population when I was there in Jonesboro had about 5,000 people. So everyone knows everyone, it was one of those kind of places to grow up. Came from very humble beginnings, didn't have a lot of money. My grandparents, looking back, you know, they came up through the Depression. So getting a high school degree wasn't, or diploma was a luxury for them. They, I think my granddad completed sixth, seventh grade, and my grandmother made it to eighth grade. So it's interesting to see how the progression of education is advanced among the next generations. My mom and dad both graduated high school, but that's really where it stopped for them. And they had careers. And I graduated from high school, I was a bookworm, I was not one of those that just grasped things quickly. So I had to study, study, study. But graduated from my alma mater, David Crockett High School, and went to East Tennessee State University, right in my back door. Such a beautiful campus, small, 12,000 students, so nothing like what we have here in Orange County. But a great place to work. My mom also worked there, she was an executive assistant for the dean for the College of Educational Leadership. So I got to see her every day, which was a joy. And graduated from East Tennessee State. And probably one of the first things that I wanted to do was move to Florida. I was so envious, every year we'd vacation in Daytona Beach. And I couldn't wait to live there, where I would go to the beach every single day. That's what I actually thought you would do if you lived in Florida, you'd go to the beach every day. That's not the case now, but that was probably what I did for the first two years when I moved to Florida. But I moved here in January of 1990. And it snowed in Florida, I couldn't believe it. I left the worst snowstorm, December of 1989, we had the worst snowstorm in Tennessee. I couldn't wait to go to the beach, and it snowed here, which I thought was so rare, and I think it was rare at that time. So it got brighter, it got sunnier, and I loved being in Florida. They asked me to share a story, like one of my obstacles in life. And probably early on, you know, you graduate from college, you have your degree, you can't wait to start working in your field. And that's exactly what I wanted to do, and that's exactly what I didn't do. I ended up, when I moved to Florida, getting a job just like anybody else out of college. You know, you work in retail, you do whatever you can until that opportunity arises. So I was working in retail and visiting this guy that I was involved with in Winter Haven. And I was driving back to Orlando, and I was on Disney property. And at that time, Disney didn't have the roadway lighting they have today. So it was really dark, there's a lot of wildlife that I didn't realize that just roamed freely on Disney property. So I'm driving in my 1979, now this is 1990, 1979 Toyota Celica, 200,000 miles on it, just moving along, and a deer hits me. I don't think I hit the deer, I think the deer hit me because it kept running and destroyed my car. And I, literally the hood is up in the windshield, and I'm holding my head out the window as I'm trying to drive. It was the Eighth Ventura movie, that was me. And I remember that the cast member at Disney said, "How can I help you?" And I thought, "Oh my gosh, can't you see, I got hit by a deer." And he said, "Well, you know, they're allowed to roam free." There was nothing they did to help me. I had no car, I had $50 to my name, and everything said, "Go home, just go back to Tennessee, you know, you're just not going to make it here." But that's exactly what I didn't do. Because those were the values my mom really instilled in me. Something I left off when, I think one of those other defining moments in your life. My parents got a divorce when I was seven years old. And my mom raised me, and she really fulfilled both of those roles. So values that she held true to her that instilled in us was just that hard work, there's ethics and trustworthiness and dependability and a whole lot of stubbornness in there, just being independent and self-starters. So having that gumption, there was no way I was going back home. And as things turned out, you know, friends helped that I had just made. And I ended up moving to Winter Haven, no car. After a couple months, I got things back on track. But that's a lot for probably a 20-year, 21-year-old, and there's probably ones that have much, much more difficulties than that. But probably that was the biggest obstacle because it would have been just so easy to go home if I said no. I got a job working for a state representative, my first job, real job I like to say, right out of college. He was the youngest state representative in Lakeland, and I was his legislative aide. And it was a dream come true until I got my first paycheck. Working for the state is not something that's that profitable. I loved every moment of it until I realized we got paid once a month, and I was making $14,000 a year. It's like, "Oh, how am I going to live on this?" So there's nothing better for a young person to learn than how to budget money when you're giving one month's salary and you've got to make it work. So I did what I did all through college, is I worked multiple jobs. I got a part-time job and made sure I had enough money to get me through each month. But those are things that I, you know, when you're young, you do those things, it's what you have to do to survive. And I think it makes you the person that you are. I wanted to stress something because I talked to a lot of kids in my previous jobs when I worked for the Drug Free Office. I talked to a lot of kids about prevention, education, I think is such a key. That proverb that says, "Education is the one thing that no one can take away from you." And I think that's such a vital thing to leave with anyone that's watching this, whether you're a young person that's watching, or you're in your 50s or 60s, 50s like me, and older. Education is something that is critical, whether it's a formal education, whether it's education from mentors, influencers, people that you look up to, family members. There's nothing that can replace the value of those lessons learned and the education that you receive. It builds you as the person you are, it helps you grow. And I think it's what makes our society grow and makes us better as human beings and people. So there was a quote, and I didn't want to, I didn't want to mess this up, sorry, I wrote it down. I was so impressed by the young lady from Pakistan, I think it's Malali. She was one of the youngest, at 17, got the Nobel Peace Prize winner from Pakistan, who, you know, just so many obstacles, but an advocate for education, especially for women, to make sure that they had their voice heard and that they stand on level ground and equal footing with men. And she said, "One child, one teacher, one book, and one pen can change the world." And that is so true. Those are things that each of us has within our grasp. And with the internet and technology, there's no reason why people can't learn, young people can't have that initiative and be educated and see all of their self-worth come to fruition through education. I just think it's so valuable and something that was instilled in me, although I was the first person that went to college. It was a huge influence in my family. And I guess one of the other things that I wanted to just briefly talk, and Commissioner mentioned it, in my career, I've had probably one of the best careers. I love working for government, I don't think there's a better place to work. I've been a public servant, seems like all of my life, and I wouldn't trade one moment of it. I found my home when I came to Orange County Government. I started off in corrections, which is a little scary by the way, I have to say. After two weeks, I was ready to leave, I was working in the jail. I interviewed in the Corrections Administration Building, thought that was okay. And they said, "No, that's not where you're going to be working, you're going to be in the Horizon Facility, in between men and women that are incarcerated." So I made it after two weeks, and I loved every moment of it. I worked at corrections for about three and a half years, I got to really work with women in the dormitory. They were on one side, I worked with them on life skills. And I have to say, when you see their lives change on things that we take for granted, that we know how to do, it's those basic life skills that I could see them learning those things that they need, that they could change their trajectory in life, and that they would not come back and be part of this revolving door of our correctional system. And so that's something you just, you feel good about what you're doing and just want to do more of that type of work. I left the county for a little bit and then came back in 2000. And I worked for the Public Safety Director, the first one that we had, Tom Holbert. Got to work with him, learn more about county administration. And as he was leaving and became US Marshal, I got to work for Chief Jerry Demings. He became our second Public Safety Director and worked for him for six years. Had so many opportunities through his leadership. Always put me in positions of authority that sometimes I didn't know that I could do it, but he had the confidence that I could. As the Commissioner mentioned, I ran the Drug Free Office for the first couple of years, loved that office. Came back over, went over into communications, public safety communications, and ran that. Very different, very technical on that side, but I learned a lot. I got to launch 311, which we use so readily now, we launched it in 2004. But I loved the work with the community, that really, that was my passion. And came back to the Drug Free Office, and that's where I spent the last 15 years, working with our young people, young adults, parents, teachers, law enforcement, treatment providers, on just about every drug, as you heard the Commissioner mention, whether we were preventing it or combating it, with the last being the opioid challenge. And that continues to be such a challenge in our community. But I'm proud of the progress that we've made. We filmed a documentary here called "It Impacts Us All", and I think that's such a true statement because opioids now, there's probably not a person on this call that hasn't been a part of someone's life that has been affected by opioids or has taken someone's life unfortunately. And there's always, there's always things that we can do from the prevention standpoint of this. Carrying the lockstones, I always like to mention that, that lifesaving medication that anybody can have to save someone's life and get them the treatment they need. So I've had a wonderful career. The last one, it's good that I'm sitting down, I still have to pinch myself when I think about the opportunities that I've been given. And when I went to Mayor Demings office, he was still, he was mayor-elect at the time, and asked me to come in and just talk about, you know, what I was experiencing at the county, what would I like to see changed, over some of the challenges. We went, we had that conversation, and then he asked me at the end if I would be a part of his administration and be his Deputy Chief of Staff. So needless to say, that was my expression. I was floored, I was thrilled. I said yes immediately, and he said, "No, no, no, think about it, you know, talk to your family, see if this is something you want to do." And I said, "I'll do that," and it's still going to be yes, by the way, the answer will still be yes. So I couldn't wait until Monday, because this was a Friday. I called him Saturday morning and said, "Absolutely, I'm on board, I can't wait." And December 4th, when he started, I started, in the mayor's office. And it's hard to believe it's been already, it's a year and three months, and it's gone by so quickly. And I just couldn't ask for a better person to work for. I get to work with amazing constituents, and the liaisons that are doing work in the community are phenomenal, representing so many of our populations and diversity that we love and embrace in Orange County. So the last thing just to say is about just being a woman. I have to say, in today's age and time, it's, I think it's a wonderful thing. It's the best place to be, where we have so many women in power. And you just heard from Commissioner Bonilla, one of our wonderful county commissioners. And you look at that board, and I can tell you, when I started in 1993 with the county, it did not look like it does today. When we have six strong, smart, intelligent women that are leading their commissioned districts. It's, I'm so proud of the electorate who put them there and to also be a female in the mayor's administration. And by the way, if you don't know the makeup of his administration, it is only him and a deputy. And the rest of us are females. So there's a lot to be said, and he respects females. And I would say, if you want to get something done, then you have a female to it, because that's what we do. So I'll leave you with that and let the others talk. But thank you so much for having me on here, it's such a pleasure. And I can't wait to hear from all the other wonderful panelists, thank you Commissioner.
Thank you so much Carol for all of that, and thank you for being on this panel, really appreciate it. And thank you for sharing your story. I loved all of your comments about working with the constituents of Central Florida, Orange County. And thank you for your kind comments of our jobs on the board as well, thanks. Our next speaker is Melissa Strazner. Melissa is a full-time aide assisting in office management, constituent affairs, land use, and legislative matters for District 5 Commissioner Emily Bonilla, myself, of Orange County. Melissa graduated cum laude from the University of Florida Levin College of Law. She is a Florida bar licensed attorney. During her time of practice, Melissa focused in the area of civil defense litigation. After a brief sabbatical, Melissa continued her legal practice in the public sector when she worked for a nonprofit legal aid society. Prior to practicing law, Melissa worked for a local real estate developer. Melissa's current position allows her to utilize two of her favorite interests, legal policy and land use planning. In her free time, Melissa enjoys activities that promote good health and peace of mind, such as yoga, spending time outdoors, volunteering, and spending time with her family. And now I will turn it over to Melissa.
Thank you Commissioner Bonilla, and thank you all you lovely ladies. It's a pleasure to be here and to be part of this panel. I am all about women empowerment, and so this was a very special gift to be here with all of you here tonight. I know during this pandemic, it's been a lot of change, and there's been a lot of having to come out of our comfort zone and, you know, deal with things that are uncertain and that we haven't faced before. And I think all of that kind of ties into kind of what all individuals have to deal with, but a lot of what women have to deal with in, you know, in life and in the workplace especially. And juggling things and, you know, being a trailblazer, being a frontrunner. So like Carol, I came up from a small town here in Central Florida. It's called Mount Dora, and actually it's a little town outside of Mount Dora called Sorento. Lake County is about 25 miles northwest of Orange County, or Orlando itself. But it was kind of light years away from what was going on in Orange County at the time. So it was a very small rural community. We moved there when I was about four years old. Before that, I lived in Chiliota. I do not remember that time because obviously I was very young. And then even before that, I was born in upstate New York. So I thanked my parents every day for moving us here to Florida and in the sunshine. I do have blue collar roots, my father was a construction worker, he owned his own finished carpentry company. My mother assisted him with his company and was a stay-at-home mom. Neither of them had their high school diploma, they both obtained their GED when they were 18 and then moved out of New York, moved back briefly, and then came here to Florida. So education was not always at the forefront of what it took to persevere, but it was mostly about hard work, work ethic, and being trudy or word. So those were kind of the platforms that I was brought up on. I had a little bit of a different life story. I ended up getting thrown into life at a very early age. I had my daughter when I was 18 years old. I was with her father for about two and a half years, and then after that, I was kind of a single mom. And so I was raising myself and raising my daughter at the same time. For about five years, it was a bit of a struggle. I was very fortunate to have my mother and to have family members to assist me. And then I caught a big break working for a local real estate developer in Orange County. That was kind of my first mentor. I was with them for about five years before the real estate crash came. So I was kind of coasting along, thinking I was okay. I did take classes here and there, managed to get my Associate's Degree. But then thought I was pretty comfortable and that I didn't need to do anymore. You know, I had my real estate license, I was doing fine. Did not foresee the massive drop that happened in the real estate market. And it left me in a very vulnerable spot, much like now, is in a sense of, are in a state of uncertainty. Fortunately, I, you know, there are kind of like three tried and true words that I have running through my mind when I think about life and when I think about what it takes to empower and what has gotten me through hard times. And that would be, you know, having patience with myself, being positive with what's happening and what can be, and just really persevere when you're going through those hard times. And so this was definitely one of those. I decided that, you know, education was my key. I needed a job that was willing to support my daughter and myself. I was working in the service industry when I lost the real estate job, which was not going to cut it. So I went back to school, I got my BA at UCF in Legal Studies. And then from there, took the LSATs, did fairly okay, but got into a four-tier law school here in Orlando called Barre University. And then worked very hard to get in the top 10% to then transfer to University of Florida, which is a top-tier law school. So again, I was always looking at, what is the future, what's going to be best for my daughter, what's going to be best for me? And again, you know, just kind of looking at it as be patient, persevere, get through this. I was fortunate enough to make some very good ties in the legal community and, because that was in 2012, 2013, when I graduated law school. Our economy was on the upswing, but it still wasn't there yet. And so there were a lot of my classmates who were concerned about getting a job. There were a lot of my classmates that had been out of school for a while and still hadn't found work. I just happened to get in with a law firm my second year in law school, I just kind of stayed with them. Wasn't necessarily what I anticipated doing, I thought I would go back into real estate law. But I got in with a civil defense law firm, and so there was a lot of litigation, premise liability, medical malpractice. Which was fun, litigation is fun, it's just not where I thought my home would be. But I was fortunate to have the job, and I took it. And I was then in corporate law for beginning part of my legal career, which was fine. But I know I had, there's some other attorneys on the panel, I know my friend Gretchen is on the panel. One thing about corporate law and kind of mid-sized law firm is something called the billable hour. And you're very much valued on a quantitative aspect as opposed to a qualitative aspect. There was definitely, that was the first time I really saw the discrepancy in male versus female treatment in the workforce too. And I don't want to make this all about that, but going into the legal practice at that point in time, and I think it's now more women lawyers than man lawyers, but it is still kind of looked at as more of a masculine career path. And so I saw a woman having to work harder to get the partnership spot. Men who were starting families, getting promoted to partnership more than women. You know, if a woman was starting a family, it was like, when is she going to drop off? And so it was kind of, kind of an eye-opener from that aspect. But I, you know, again, I think it's having patience, having the ability to kind of take steps back and focus on where you want to be and not let some of those obstacles kind of control you or stand in your way. When I was, you know, I'm a young associate, I'm kind of plugging along, things were going fairly okay again in my life. And then at 35, my daughter hit me with the news that she was pregnant at 17. Which was really difficult for me to take in because I was a young mother, I knew the struggles. I kind of talked to her about some of these struggles, the understanding that I love, you know, having her, but that there are upsides and downsides to being a young mom. And, you know, if you can wait, it's probably going to be easier, you know, in life, and you'll be more prepared. So that was difficult news to take. And then on top of that, the father passed away in a tragic car accident when she was seven months pregnant. It was, again, a time where I kind of felt like life was going to coast along, and then a truck came and hit us, and not, no pun intended with that. But at that point in time, I really needed to focus on my family. And the law firm that I was working for, there was a little segue here. I did begin working for a different law firm than where I was working when I first started out of law school. But they weren't very understanding in me needing the time off. And, you know, I had to make the decision to focus then on my family and not focus on a career. And I think that's another difficult decision that, you know, us women have to make. I mean, in my situation, I was, you know, still a single mom and only one there for my daughter. And so there was no like, who should or shouldn't, it was just, I need to do that. But I know that there are decisions like this that women get faced with a lot, is... But I know that there are decisions like this that women get faced with a lot is um, you know, when there is a, a family situation or when there's something that needs to be dealt with that, that may require an extended time or extended focus. Um, you know, typically it is us that, that turn to being that nurturer or focusing more on the family. Which I think is a beautiful thing. I think it's great that we have the ability as women to have this nurturing aspect and then still go out there in the job force and kick ass. I think it's, I think it's really cool. And um, you know, so, so going back to my story, you know, I, I took that time to, to be with my daughter. And this is definitely a place where positivity uh, was really ringing true in my ear. I had to focus on the positivity. Um, you know, every, everything that we had to be grateful for. And, and help her see that too, because it was a very difficult time and difficult thing to go through at, at any age, but especially at a young age, being faced with motherhood and the loss of somebody you love. So with that, I kind of really got into my spirituality. Um, I am a huge yogi. I think a lot of people that know me know that. Um, so through that sabbatical time and taking that introspection, it, it really got me more focused into helping people and healing people. And some of that kind of came into effect before I even left the practice of law. I, I did help start a nonprofit called Orlando Outreachers, uh, where the focus was kind of bringing volunteers together to help with grassroots nonprofit organizations that go out there and help the community. Um, and so it really kind of helped um, helped me put together, you know, because when I was practicing law, it was a lot of, uh, there was just a lot of focus on, on money and the clients and honestly, not a lot of time for just helping others and just being out there in society. And so that's what, I really think that took that time away, brought for me. Uh, from there, I uh, did decide to go back into the law practice. I um, but with a focus on the people more so than just the legal practice. So I went and I worked for um, a legal aid society, a local one here called Community Legal Services of Mid-Florida. And I was with them um, on a part-time basis for about six months before um, Commissioner Bonilla found my resume amongst some papers on her desk. I had applied for a county attorney position um, with Orange County. And I gave my resume to each of the Board of County Commissioners. And about six months down the road is when I got a call from Commissioner Bonilla. And what I thought was really cool is when uh, when I got the call, the first thing I was unsure about was I didn't know what a commissioner's aide actually did. Um, I uh, never really thought of myself as a political person. Um, you know, I'm, I'm a registered Republican, but I've always looked at myself as kind of apolitical and never really got involved in it. But I am very much an advocate for community and helping people. And so that's what drew me into wanting to know more about what it is to aid somebody in a position like Commissioner Bonilla. And what I found is that it offered the opportunity to kind of utilize, you know, those analytical skills that I, that I have just from my education, but then also the humanitarian side that I really got in tune with. Um, especially, you know, during the, the, the years of um, uh, you know, healing with my daughter and finding my spirituality. And so it's really an honor to be in this position. I've been with the commissioner almost about nine months now. Um, it's been a huge eye-opener to see how much um, local government has and plays a role in the lives of our local community. Um, I think I always looked to states or I looked at federal legislation before I looked at the local level. And so um, it, it also provides a level of comfort to know that, that we have so many resources right here to help our community. Um, and so I, I really am uh, fortunate that my windy road led me here. And I really think it led me here because I did stay by those, or, or live by those um, you know, those, those three attributes that I talked about, having patience with ourselves. And we get knocked down, we have moments where we think we're not gonna push through, you know, be patient, know that, you know, this too shall pass. Um, and, and be positive, as positive as you can be, you know. And when you have bad things happen, which is his life, it will happen, find that silver lining and, and hold on to that and keep a focus on it. Um, and, and when you, when you do those two things, um, you have patience in yourself, when you're positive um, that, that things will turn out for you, um, that, that in itself is going to allow you to persevere, persevere and overcome um, and, and get to your goal. So um, and, and as a woman, I think um, you know, I, I think it's a wonderful thing. We are these creators, we're these nurturers. Um, we have an elegance, a poise, a beauty that I don't think any man can um, hold a candle to. And so it's, it's really wonderful um, to be a woman, to be a woman in this day and age. And thank you, all of you, for allowing me to tell my story. Um, and I'll, I'll pass it on to the next speaker now.
We do have some questions from, from the audience, but we will be answering them after Sammy's. Okay. Go ahead Commissioner.
Okay, thank you Melissa and thank you for taking the job with me. You've been great and I really appreciate having you on our team. And next I'm going to introduce Sammy Hamon Madero. She's the President/CEO of Urbener, a minority and women business enterprise, solution-based agency that assists the corporate, nonprofit, and government sectors in overcoming their diversity, inclusion, and marketing challenges. She is one of the nation's leading experts specializing in the US Hispanic market. Career highlights include leading the first-ever Spanish-language media effort for a US presidential candidate, which led to winning the highly coveted Hispanic vote in nineteen ninety-six and becoming the publisher of a national Spanish-language magazine. She holds a Master's in Communications from the University of Puerto Rico and has recognized, and was recognized as one of the twenty-five most influential Hispanics in central Florida in twenty sixteen by Vision Magazine. In twenty nineteen, she was appointed by Orange County Florida Commissioner Maribel Gomez Godera to the county's Arts and Culture Council, where she also serves as Chair of the Sustainability Committee. And she was invited to be an official delegate of the Second Annual Latino Leadership Summit held at the United Nations by the We Are All Human organization. Now pass it on to Sammy.
Thank you so much Commissioner. Um, I'm, I'm tickle pink to be surrounded by so many sheros. And I'm sure that also those attending this webinar have a lot of stories. I think um, our stories aren't unique. They're a little bit different in some aspects, but I think the common thread is that perseverance and that um, that caring, you know? Um, not only for um, self-sufficiency and, and, and trying to make things happen for oneself, but also uh, caring for our families and, and communities that, that we work, play, and live in. Um, thank you for having me here and I really appreciate that everyone jumped on um, this uh, and, and sharing this space, right, uh, during these trying times. And so I'll talk a little bit about why we're wearing, you know, our shiro costumes. Again, my story's not unique, um, but I have to say as a Latina living in the US, um, I, I always like to share how that transition to central Florida, because I'm a transplant, um, happened. I'm the product of Puerto Ricans that migrated to New York City in the nineteen forties. My grandparents um, had um, their kids there in the South Bronx. And I'm the product of what they call New Yoricans, that were born and raised in the South um, Bronx. Um, and uh, and uh, so my, my beginnings were here on the mainland US. At the age of eight, my parents, who never lived in Puerto Rico, had this crazy idea of uprooting my siblings and I and moving us from the asphalt jungle to a jungle right in the middle of Puerto Rico. And so I grew up in a tropical forest, surrounded by trees, in a very rural environment. And when I first got there, I was la gringa. I didn't speak of, lick of, of Spanish, but soon that very community that seemed so foreign to me became my extended family. Like um, Carol and Melissa, um, my parents um, instilled in me this um, a strong work ethic, this love for community, and also the importance of having a higher education. So when I finished my master's degree um, in communications, I was so proud. You know, and my dad was so proud because he, he always used to tell me, "Don't depend on anybody. You have to make sure that you're able to be self-sufficient because you don't want to be in a pickle", you know, "by having to depend especially on a man", right? So that being said, um, when I graduated, I'm like, how can I really be one of those people that work in what I went to school for? And so then I decided to go back to New York City since I had all my aunts and uncles. I'm one of forty-two first cousins, so that's a whole other story. So it's a large family. And so I had a place to crash, you know, while I got my feet wet. But I wanted to go to the Big Apple, the media capital of the world, to pursue a career in communications. And lo and behold, you know, with master's degree in my hand, I was bilingual. I was really cute back then, you know, so I thought I was hot shit. I, I, I walked into the publishing world, but soon I found out after landing a job in publishing, in the magazine industry, that it was run by white men. And while I saw this wall of people that were very different than me from a cultural standpoint, they saw me as invisible. And that's how I felt at the beginning of my career. And so I was like pondering, what in the world can I possibly do to not be invisible anymore? You know? And so what I decided to do is look around me and see if I could find someone that could guide me through that process. And I couldn't find anyone that looked at, like me. The few Latinas that were in publishing back then, and we're talking about twenty-five years ago, um, were in the same hustle I was in, you know, just trying to make it happen, just trying to uh, further my career. And so I found the one woman that was in leadership at this publishing company that I worked at. Her name um, is Betty Rockmore. She's with Sirius Radio right now. And uh, she basically became my mentor. And uh, I could hear her talking to me, telling me, "Sammy, Sammy, you need to define your value proposition", you know, and she was like an, like a Jewish mother, you know, hovering over me all the time. "You need to be a master of your craft, you know, you need to own it." I'm like, "Okay, cool, so what am I good at?", you know? I was in publishing, I was in Hispanic magazines. So I'm like, "Okay, let me just understand this market", which back then was ten percent of the US uh, marketplace uh, or population very well. The second thing she told me was, "You need to articulate your ideas clearly, precisely, and, and concisely." You know, "These guys don't want to hear people beating around the bush." And I'm like, "Okay", so then I, I furthered my skills in terms of communication. I had to get to the point, learn how to um, present, learn how to pitch, and just be very straightforward and blunt as, as they were. Um, the other thing she told me was also evaluate and communicate data, to learn how to look at numbers. Because at the end of the day, all they cared was about the bottom line. You know, "How much money is coming in? Is this profitable?", they didn't care about anything else. I'm like, "Okay, cool, I could do that." And then the last thing was to avoid being typecast. As a Latina in a male-dominated world, right? He, she, she, she was always concerned about ensuring that I played the part, you know, that I tried to fit in or, and, and I know it's hard, hard to do because with all of this sexiness, you know, to downplay, you know, I tried to just fit in and not be seen as an object, you know? Um, of, of uh, or romantic, you know, adventure, if you will. So I, I rarely wore skirts, I always had a pantsuit. My hair normally was pulled back in a bun because I needed to downplay, you know, my feminine aspects and become a little bit manly. So in the end, I wound up being like a partial, like, almost like a dude, okay? So what happens? In the year two thousand, the census came in and all of a sudden, a window opened because there was such a large growth in the Latino population and they had no idea, these white men, on what to do with this data that was right in front of them. And they looked at me and they said, "Wait a second, you, you look like one of those people. Can you go, what do you know about this market?" And I'm like, "Oh", I had already, had already spent a few years developing my craft. So I started spitting the data, pitching my value proposition, and bam, I was included in the club. And so all of a sudden, I was named the publisher of a national Hispanic magazine. I was zipping from state to state, meeting with clients, I had an expense card. It was fabulous. It created like this bubble because I was finally making it, but it came with a price. And the price was that I soon realized when I compared with my male counterparts that one, I was underpaid, you know? And it turns out Latinas are paid fifty-nine cents to the dollar compared to white men um, doing, doing the same exact job. And that's, that's current, okay? I was also harassed, overlooked, I was blocked from certain opportunities, I was even mocked, you know? So it wasn't, it wasn't uh, fun, it was a very trying time. However, silver lining Melissa, you're absolutely right, okay? I realized that I stopped being invisible. I went from being invisible to becoming an armadillo. Why an armadillo? Because an armadillo has a thick skin. And so I learned to take the punches and all that mockery and all, and okay, yeah, you're sliding me. Oh, okay, there's a promotion and you're not, you're overlooking me, that's fine. And you know, I built that kind of resistance. But if you know anything about the armadillo, the armadillo's hard on the outside, but they're still soft in the inside. And so I was able to guard my sense of compassion for others, the values that were instilled in me, since I was a little girl of mi casa es su casa and caring, you know, for, for, for others that are perhaps in not as such an advantageous um, position as I am. The other thing that I was able to develop, being surrounded by all these, you know, characters, was that um, I realized that I developed a very strong power. And the power is that if I put these blinds on, the minute I put on this mask on, I could read right through people's bullshit, you know? So it really gave me a really strong sense of realizing who's who and that power of discernment. It was wonderful. And then all of a sudden, I'm becoming a shiro myself, right? What happened? In the year two thousand four, I met my husband. Um, so I'm a late bloomer, my kids are still young now, which is also very opposite what the, you know, typical Latina, you know? My dad was like, "Something's wrong with you", and I'm like, "Nothing wrong with you", "Something's wrong with the, the dating scene here in New York City", but in any, in any event, I digress. My, I met my husband and we decided to move to Florida. Thankfully, I was able to um, work uh, with a New York-based company from home and just travel from here, from Orlando all over the country. So those first four years um, that I lived here from two thousand four to two thousand eight, I really didn't set any roots here locally because I was on a plane to New York City, Dallas, LA, you name it. And uh, and it was fabulous. I was making well over six figures, again, living in my bubble. And uh, and, and that soon was popped. Why? Because in the year two thousand eight, the recession hit. And my boss came down to Orlando and my husband swore I was gonna get a promotion because I was doing great, my numbers were great. And my boss offered um, me to come back to New York after four years living here in Orlando, um, to keep my job. Otherwise, he was gonna have to let me go. And at that point, my son was nine months old and I said, "No, I'm not gonna leave", you know, uh, we just not, we wouldn't have what we have here, you know, this lifestyle here. And I'm not afraid of doing any kind of work, so I'm, I'm staying. And so um, they gave me a severance package, were very generous, um, to hold us off. And at that point, I was like, "Okay, now, now what do I do?" So I started looking for work. I'm like, "Okay, good, I have unemployment", I started looking for work and in two thousand eight, um, since I had no roots here, I knew no one. And I realized, "Oh my gosh, this is like Puerto Rico, it's who you know". And there were so few jobs available because we were in, in the middle of the recession. There were millions of people that had lost their jobs. I was just one of them, but then on top of that Latina, I was just one of them. But then on top of that, Latina and then female? Forget about it. That one job that maybe paid a fraction of what I was making was going to go to a white guy, you know? Because that's what I found, you know? The same wall that I found when I first arrived to New York City twelve years earlier, I found here. And I felt like, "Oh, my gosh, am I invisible again?" And for one nanosecond, I believed it until I remembered, "Aha, no, I'm not invisible. I'm an armadillo." I had to remind myself, "You're not invisible. You're an armadillo, you know? I'm tough." So with my grit, I decided I'm going to start my own business because there was nothing, no other option for me. And that's what happened in July of 2008. I started my business, Urbinder. A year later, my daughter was born in 2009. And then that's when it got very real, okay? I went from being an armadillo to being a warrior because now I had my daughter, you know, that needed to have a voice. And damn it, she's not invisible, you know? So I put the blade between my teeth and I started hustling, hustling, hustling. And lo and behold, the next census came through. And it was like, "Thank you, Lord, okay?" The numbers demonstrated how huge the growth here in Florida of the Latino market was in that ten-year period. And I think it had grown fifty-nine percent from census to census. And so what happened was that hospital networks that I met through different chambers were asking, "Hey, your specialty is the Hispanic market. Could you help us?" And that's how I was able to start growing my business here locally. And I'm so thankful and so blessed, you know? I feel just completely blessed because of it. And we have clients in New York and LA and other states, you know? But that's basically our sweet spot here is helping with the provision of multi-trillionly sensitive care in the hospital networks here in central Florida and training and cultural competency and all of that. So what are we experiencing now? The next census is coming up, and I can't wait because as you see, right? And the next big shift, and we're experiencing that next big shift right now. It turns out that minority-majority markets hit almost $4 trillion in buying power in just 2018, which is one-fourth of the total national buying power. When we look at schoolchildren, K to 12, across the country, it already tipped over. Minority-majority students are 52.9% as of 2019, just last year. So this is happening. When we look at Orange County, thirty-two percent of the population is Hispanic. Osceola County, fifty-five percent. Seminole County, twenty-two percent. And check this out, Miami State, seventy percent almost, sixty-nine point one percent. That's where we're headed. And so diversity is something that I live and I breathe and I celebrate. And so I feel like we're in a really good place to really do five things or help promote five things. And these are my five E's to give you these other takeaways. Number one, it's time to educate. Let's educate each other about these cultural differences and what make us unique, you know? And then the second E is embrace. Let's embrace each other. We're one big family. If one thing this whole coronavirus thing has done is to really bring us to the... It's taken us to a very primal place, you know? Look, I'm getting chills just talking about it. We are a tribe. We are a tribe, okay? And we need to look out for each other. It's the human tribe, okay? The other thing we have to do is to eat... The third E is to edify each other, okay? Don't, like me, I was in that bubble. I was so selfish for so many years. And when I hit rock bottom, I'm like, "How did I not notice my neighbor? How did I, you know, in that hustle, trying to be okay and to try to make it happen for me, I didn't stop for a moment to think of, you know, my neighbor, of newcomers, recent arrivals coming into this region that have no idea how to navigate, you know, these complex systems." The fourth E, let's embed. Let's embed in our children those values that are true to America, that are true to different cultures, okay? Those are the universal values of, like I said before, "mi casa es su casa", you know, of being able to extend an olive branch if there's a difference or disagreement, of wanting your society to grow and to have everyone feel like they have a place of value. And then the last E is to exercise your leadership and influence. And I really... This is a big shout out to all the moms out there. We are the matriarchs of the next generation of Americans. Let's exercise our vote. And we need to drag those kids, you know, to the voting booths if they're eighteen plus and make sure that everybody participates of this democracy. And at the end of the day, as a Latina in this country, I don't feel invisible anymore. I actually feel invincible. And that's my story. Thank you so much for listening.
Okay, we have run over the time with questions. So there were some questions that were made by the audience. I have assigned them. One was to Carol, one was to Melissa, and I will be assigning them to one to Sammy. Unfortunately, we don't have time to go over questions. For the next panelists, please keep in mind that you only have ten minutes to speak. And I will go ahead and introduce Nisha. So I'm going to take away the camera from one of my panelists right now and bring Nisha in.
Okay, Yvette, can they answer the questions on the platform here? And then the people who are attending can see that I answered.
Yeah, I've already assigned the questions to Carol and Melissa if they want to go ahead and speak while I get the other panelist on. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and take the camera away from Melissa so that Gretchen can go on. Gretchen, could you please share your camera? And Melissa, somebody asked, "Melissa, how you have been through so many tough things in your life? What gave you the strength..." Sorry, the question was new. "What gave you the strength to keep going? And how did you deal with your lows?"
Um, so I think for me, the strength to keep going was, or still is, my daughter. I had this life that depended on me. And I, you know, I use that as my fuel to, you know, rocket me to wherever I needed to go to see us through those hard times. I think the advice that, or, you know, and dealing with those lows, again, I think just always trying to look at what to be grateful for, what, you know, what the positive, you know, outcome is from it or the lesson to be learned from it, always knowing that, you know, this is the moment in time that it does pass if you just keep, you know, looking for the next best thing you could do, whether it's helping yourself, helping others, helping those you love. And I think that's kind of what got me through. And I think there's one more part to that question about what advice I would give to young single mothers. You know, believe in yourself, find a support group, find, you know, other moms around that you can help with. And, you know, just know that you are that child's world and use that as the fuel that you need to get you through those tough times.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue with the rest of the panelists since we're running with so much short time. I will go ahead and introduce Nisha. Nisha Carey is a wife to a US Army veteran, mother, model, business mentor, host, public speaker, and Miss Galaxy Bahamas 2018. As CEO and founder of The Power Group, Nisha is known for navigating through every avenue she takes in business and life with intense passion, which over the years has turned her passion into purpose as she focuses on creating positive and accountable relationships amongst young girls and women and denouncing the queen bee belief and instead teaching them to bravely balance life, business, and woman-to-woman relations without being territorial. Women have the ability to create significant impact. It's a matter of confidence, overcoming the sense of fear and being left behind and unconditioning ourselves to be vulnerable without feeling weak, something that Nisha believes in. Go ahead, Nisha, introduce the rest, your first panelist.
All right. Hi, good evening, guys. First, I want to say thank you for having me on this conference call. And I'm very excited to be here with all of you wonderful ladies tonight. For me, as she mentioned, I am married to my high school sweetheart, and I have two children, Jacob and Ashari, who are fifteen and nine. And I began my company, The Power Group, a few years ago simply based off of the experiences that I dealt with growing as a growing woman. It seemed like every relationship that I would encounter was always a relationship where I was a genuine friend. And then I would always encounter women in which they would either look for something from me. And then once they couldn't get it from me, they would turn around and turn their backs on me. And so I got tired of crying over certain relationships because I would always cry about it. And it just came to a point where I told my husband, "I just need to figure out a way to really bring women together." And so that's how my first company was actually called The Powerful Network, in which I hold a national, well, a day here in Orange County that was given to me by Orange County City Commissioner Regina Hill last year. And it's called the Powerful Network Day. And basically, that day, which is March 25th, is given to me as an opportunity for women to come together and to network in a positive atmosphere and learn how to be accountable amongst one another. I think it's highly important for us as women to learn how to balance and navigate life together because we're always... I think that we were taught at a young age to kind of like be one another's competitor in a sense. And it's something that I don't want for myself. I don't want for you. I don't want for my daughter. And so I try to just make opportunities where we have the opportunity to like change that thought process. And so that's pretty much what I do in short. I don't want to take up too much more of your time because I know that we're literally almost out of time. But I want to give the other panelists some, an opportunity to speak. Okay, perfect. So Deanna is actually a good friend of mine. Deanna Hurt is a professional who maintains a flair for multitasking and fostering positive relationships with stakeholders. Her background in philanthropic endeavors has afforded her a plethora of opportunities in relationship management, budget management, team building, and supervisory experience. After raising her children in 2014, Deanna joined a retirement plan specialist as a vice president of client relations and business development and strategy. She spearheaded the Cash Balance Plan Initiative and traveled with the CEO to make presentations nationally. She educated business people on the benefits of 401K plans as well as cash balance plans in 2019. Deanna was given an opportunity to work with the Orlando Predators Arena Football Team as a consultant. In September of that same year, the new owner hired her to become the first female African-American general manager in the National Arena League. Additionally, Deanna also has multiple titles for baking. She has been seen on the Food Network Cooking Channel, Travel Channel, The Today Show, and The Daily Buzz. Never slowing down, Deanna has also started her own company for her baking goods. Deanna Aspire... What is it? I can't... Sorry. Deanna Aspire launched on March 1st, 2020. I apologize. I can barely read the text, though I apologize for that.
I appreciate it. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having me. I cannot tell you how much it means to me to be here. My story is very different from all the stories you've heard previously. In 1989, I married and had three amazingly beautiful children. At this time, they were twenty-five, twenty-two, and fourteen. Unfortunately, after twenty-five years of marriage, I found myself divorced. During the time of my first twenty-five years, I worked on things like the Golden Gala, the Dream Gala, the Starry-Sky Night Gala. I was involved with the Heart Association, Ronald McDonald House. I pretty much sat on just about every board in town, but never actually held a job. In 2013, I found myself, almost like the movie Diary of a Mad Black Woman. I had no money, no home, no nothing, no education, no plan. Was like, "Okay, now what?" So just like every other strong woman who's here today, I sat down, made a plan. I am not going to lie, I completely BS'd my way into my first job. And if I didn't know it, I would go to work all day and then come home and read huge books on whatever I didn't know. So when I went into work the next day, I was knowledgeable and ready to go so that I could keep the job that I needed so desperately. Through all my work in philanthropic areas and working on huge galas that were two, three thousand people, organization came easy. I have three children. We all know, organization is a necessity in this life when you have children. I was able to parlay that into working at Retirement Plan Specialists. And the CEO, Sandra Turner, was a blessing to me who educated me and encouraged me to go to school. Unfortunately, I just graduated college in December. I did four years while working full-time and still dealing with my children. And I am applying to get my master's in August. And through all of that, I have worked for a company out of New York City that has given me an opportunity to be more in the public speaking eye. And then, of course, with the Orlando Predators, which anyone knows, being in a male-dominated industry is insanely hard. And it's very difficult, you know? You know, she was talking about being an armadillo, you know, hard on the outside, soft on the inside. In football, there is no soft. There's just, there's no soft. You have to be on your game. You have to be very aggressive and know what you're talking about. And unfortunately, when you are a woman and being a woman who came from an abusive marriage, you know, you have to learn how to maneuver in these circles. And I learned how to maneuver in the circles and to be stern and be hard. And then I had to learn how to be soft and be that armadillo that she was talking about. You know, and I know I only have ten minutes, so I'm trying to be very concise here. You learn as a woman that you have to be twice as good as your counterpart, your male counterpart, in almost every circumstance. They're always going to second guess you. Again, going back to what Sammy said, they do look at you as an object. If you are vaguely attractive in any way, shape, or form, they're always telling you, "You're a pretty girl." Or, you know, "That's so much for your head to handle" as if you're not an intelligent, well-educated person. In fact, I'm not going to mention names, but I actually had someone in an actual business meeting, you know, tell me, "Well, you know, she got her degree out of a Crackerjack box last week." And, you know, it's like, you do realize who signs your paycheck, right? I'm just asking. So you have to... It's a very thin line you have to walk because if you're too aggressive, then you become the B-I-T-C-H. And if you're too soft, then you're the pretty girl. So it's a very delicate balance. And I'd like to say that as a woman, I've learned how to walk it, but I have to learn daily how to walk it. It's not just like you learn it and that's it. Because as you go through the different circumstances and dealing with different organizations and different personalities, you have to learn how to deal with each one of them as you go through. And, you know, you just, you learn to adapt, educate yourself, and move forward. And that's pretty much how I've maneuvered in this world for the last six years of my life, is to adapt and move forward. Because when you were homeless, you have no money, and you've never had a job in your entire life, you learn to adapt really, really quick and you figure a lot of things out. And now with this current, you know, pandemic that we're all dealing with, you know? I don't know if people realize, all professional sports are down. So here I am again, and I've got to start all over again. and figure figure out what I'm going to do because right now, it doesn't look like professional sports are gonna start again till the fall. So you you learn to adapt as a woman. You learn to to be tougher than what they think you are. And you just, you move forward. Um, so going to the baking side of things, um when I was married, I actually started competing on a lark and actually hold about a hundred and fifty titles for baking, a few of which are national titles. Um I was actually just on Travel Channel uh last year for uh a show called Best in Food. And I'm, I still do cooking segments on a show called The Daily Flash. And I'm hoping to, that Deanna's pies will be in a restaurant near you soon. So that's my story.
Thank you so much for sharing your story and for being on the panel. Um that's really interesting that you brought up the the Predators and that they're, yeah, they're not playing right now. A lot of sports aren't playing. So um good luck with that challenge that you're having right now. I know you'll see it through, just like you've seen all of the other.
Oh, absolutely.
All the other challenges. Uh and thank you for taking the time to be here on the panel for sharing your story.
Thank you.
Next, we have Gretchen. Gretchen Ortiz is a business entrepreneur and a passionate attorney. Her passion for law began through her own personal experience and since then has been growing immensely to help others. Her focus is real estate law, contracts, estate planning and probate, business law, serious personal injury, and medical malpractice litigation. Gretchen is devoted to clients and has developed a culture within her firm of compassion, empathy, and kindness. She will fight relentlessly to protect her clients' rights and divert client cases and the right direct and divert client cases in the right direction to obtain justice. However, as passionate as she is about her career, it is helping others and giving to those less fortunate that fills her heart. For the past twelve years, she has been an active volunteer at High Kid Foundation and a non, sorry, a nonprofit organization whose mission is to make dreams come true for children undergoing cancer treatment and older terminal illnesses. And I will pass it on to Gretchen.
Hi, everyone. Hi, thank you, Commissioner. Hi, everyone, it's such a pleasure to be here. I'm very honored. Um I'm gonna start this a little bit different than everyone else, and then I'll share in my story. Um I am very proud to be a woman. And if I had to summarize what it takes to become an empowered woman in one word, that word will be relentless. Because the journey to becoming an empowered woman is not an easy one. In this journey, you will feel fear. We, I think all of us in the panel have felt fear at some point in our life. However, it is in facing those fears, in in facing those fears that you will rise above and learn to be front fear. Uh you will also feel doubt, you will doubt yourself. But it is in that moment that you have to believe in yourself the most. You will face challenges along the way, but overcoming them will change your perspective and outlook and even create new paths to get to where it is that you want. Um and last but not least, um you will face, you will, I'm sorry, you will face obstacles, but with time, you will learn to walk, jump, or run over them. And last but not least, um you will, there will be times where you will feel alone. Um and I have felt this way as well. But it is solid that it's needed and it's necessary for you to be able to develop ideas, strategies, and plan your next move. So this is a very good thing to keep in mind, especially with what we're going through right now with this crisis, because I know it seems like something very negative. So I always like to reframe the situation and say, what can I do now? What, let me plan, let me re-strategize this moment that I have for me, for myself, um come up with new ideas and develop develop new plans. And I always go back to history when we look in, um, you know, history, um the best businesses and, you know, the people that have made a difference in in the world actually did it through recessions and through going through times like this. Um I faced each and every one of these feelings and um challenges that I've spoken about. And I can tell you that from best, from personal experience, that in each of these experiences were hidden lessons. And these lessons will forever change and shape my life and to becoming the woman that I am today, which has not been an easy journey. Um my journey began at the age of seven. I am the daughter of, my father was in the military. I was born in Puerto Rico, but I was raised in Germany till I was six. So my first language was German, um so I, we traveled a lot. Um however, I lost my father. Um this shook my life and severed my family in a very horrible way. It shakes my foundation. And to say the least, my father was my hero. I looked up to him and he was my all, he was my everything. However, I promised myself um that I will make him proud. And to this day, I have kept that promise through all the challenges and obstacles that I faced. I had my son at the age of seventeen. I heard Melissa when she said she had her daughter at the age of eighteen. I had my son when I was seventeen. And at that time, Manny said that that was a setback for me in my life. However, he became my force and that drive that pushed me forward to going in directions of my dreams. Um at nineteen, I had my daughter. However, I didn't let that stop me from moving forward to achieve my dreams. I worked full-time, went to college full-time, took care of my kids. And by the age of twenty-four, I owned three businesses, um my own home. And I felt I had come through the, had come through the promise that I had made my father before he passed away. But of course, life always has um uh different plans. Like now, what we're facing now, we would, I I bet everyone in December was making their plans for twenty twenty, and this was not in their plans because life always brings what what it brings. Um so but um three years later, after I had um started my businesses and I was at the top, making my figures, I was happy, I was, you know, everything seemed um perfect, I had my third child. And I faced the worst recession in U.S. history. Um and my significant other at the same time was diagnosed with stage four cancer. So I had a little child, I lost my business. Um and I, my my significant other was going through cancer. I lost everything, completely. Everything just vanished. From one day to another, everything changed. Um I had, everything that I had worked to achieve was gone. But it was in that moment I was faced with two options. Either I gave up, um which is always the easy way out, or I rise above it. And, you know, I decided again to do the latter. I chose to pursue what what was my dream at that point, um which was to go um to law school and become a lawyer, uh to make a difference in people, in other people's lives. I've always liked to make a difference in other people's lives, whether it's be good and smile or do whatever I can to help other people because, like I said, my life has not been easy. Um and in the midst of the chaos, that's exactly what I did. And and today, here I am, sharing my story with all of you and to inspire you not to give up and become who you were always meant to be, which is a resilient, empowered woman. So take this time that we're going through, we're all in this together, um and try to find the positive in it. I know a lot of people are losing their jobs, a lot of people are scared. Uh we're facing uncertain times, but it is not the first time that we've been through this. And we've always come out on top. Um but what it is essential in in the three keys that I can tell you is, take this time to re-plan, re-strategize, think of what it is that you really want, find that passion, and develop a plan to get there. So that's my message.
Thank you so much, Gretchen. Wow, your story really had an up and down. Um what are you doing now? Like, how do you, where are you right now in your life?
So right now, I am, I manage my own firm. Um I I I practice real estate law, contracts, personal uh uh serious personal injury and medical malpractice. And so what kind of led me to law school um was the fact that what my my significant other was diagnosed with um stage four cancer. It was after multiple misdiagnosis. And so um I remember that um I told the doctor at the last, the last time that we went to the hospital, that this man can't even get up from the bed. I need you to do whatever it is that you need to do to find what the cause is because they kept telling him it was um a muscle spasm. And they kept giving him medications and opioids, and that wasn't helping at all. And that's when they caught it, I had to put my foot down. And I, and being um going through him with his cancer, which was fourteen days of chemotherapy, seven days at the hospital, and seven days at home, which I had to undertake myself, the seven days at home. So I basically became kind of like a doctor. Um, um when I was in the hospital during those seven days, I would see other people and I would hear their stories. And I said, you know, this is very unfair. Everything that goes on within the medical system, in a legal perspective, is unfair. Um I I was also involved in a car accident in which I almost lost my son. And I also went through a legal system, you know, I called an attorney, a personal injury attorney. And um although he represented me correctly legally, um it was all about the numbers. I never felt I was hurt, I never felt that he understood what I was going through, and I wanted to make a difference. So where am I right now? I am trying to change the the law. I'm trying to change the way people view attorneys, and I'm trying to change the way that the process works. Because at the end of the day, the person that's getting into a car accident is not about a phone, is not about the money. In some cases, it's very serious, and in some cases, it changes the whole dynamic and people's lives completely. My overall dream is not just to be an attorney. I'm not only, I'm gonna stay here for forever. Um uh I, there, I have other aspirations and other things that I want to do. Um and, but I know that I'm gonna get there.
Thank you so much to all of our panelists today for joining us. The last slide that um the audience can see is of uh the Instagram page of the Commissioner for District Five and The Power Group for inspirational messages to women. Uh thank you again, everybody that came. I did not see any questions from the audience come in for the second half, but I appreciate everyone sharing their stories today. Commissioner, if you'd like to end something with a message.
Thank you so much for all the panelists and all of your stories. They were extremely inspirational and I'm I'm humbled by the stories and the challenges that you all went through. And it was great listening to you persevere. And I think that'll be very encouraging to others um listening to it. And I know we had one question that Melissa answered. And just, I believe, hearing from others how they faced those challenges and how they got through could be a inspiration for others and advice that others could take on how to get through any challenges that they are going through. And I know right now with the pandemic that's going on, a lot of people are probably feeling like they have to start over again. And it can be done. And as you heard from all these stories, a lot of us started from, I didn't get to share mine, but my story is out there from the one last year. You can go and watch that on the Orange County YouTube channel. But, you know, we went through times that we we had nothing. And we were starting from rock bottom and had to build ourselves up. Or we we, and we had those ups and downs where it was great, then it was rock bottom again, and we were able, we had to build ourselves up again. And everyone can do it, you can do it. And I have faith in you and I have faith in our country and that things will get better. So it's never the end. Um, there's always hope there, and you can always build yourself back up. You just have to perse- persevere and be dedicated and never give up. So thank you again for being on this. Thank you for the panelists, for your stories and for sharing. And thank you for everyone who's watching this. And I really hope that you can take something away from this. Thank you.